It is six o'clock and we'll call the January 21st meeting of the Board of Ed-- uh, did it again? Of the Board of Commissioners to order, please. And I've asked Commissioner Bronson to give our invocation and Commissioner Fendig to do our pledge for us tonight. If you'd stand, please.
Lord, we just come tonight thanking you for your mercy, your goodness, and your love for us. Father, we thank you for the blessing we have to live, to work, and to serve in this wonderful place. Father, help us to always be good stewards of our assets, our resources, and our environment. Father, we pray for our country tonight. We pray for our new president. Father, we pray that you give him strength and resilience and wisdom to lead this great nation. Father, we pray for those that have suffered with this COVID-19 pandemic, not only for the people but for the families. And, Lord, we just pray for healing there. Father, as always, we pray for our first responders, those that are here locally, and those that serve us so bravely abroad. Father, tonight, we pray for wisdom and discernment for ourselves as we deliberate the issues before this county. And, Father, we pray that everything we do would bring honor and glory to you. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have one citizen that would like to speak in our public comment period. If you would come forward, please state your name for the record, and I would remind you, you have up to five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope this works. Okay. There you go. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Pat Featherstone. I reside on Hampton Point Drive in Hampton Point. I am here to discuss the approval of the site plan by the Island Planning Commission for the Hampton Market at 109 Butler Lake Drive. Suffice it to say, the approval given by the IPC was not well received by the residents of Hampton Point. Numerous residents spoke against it. Not one resident spoke in favor of it. I presented a petition of opposition signed by 75 people who live on Butler Lake Drive, Hampton Point Drive, and Pierce Butler Drive. For those of us who live in Hampton Point, this proposed development is as detrimental as the proposed Harris Teeter gas station. And yet, the IPC commissioners, who gave such a thorough vetting of the Teeter Plan, did not apply the same level of scrutiny to the convenience store application. For 31 years, this piece of property has gone undeveloped, but the residential communities around the property have grown considerably. The north end of St. Simons has developed into a quiet residential area. And it is for this reason that the folks moved to the north end. While aware that this property is zoned PD text, we as residents do not understand why something this disruptive to our community is "good forever," decades later, without consideration for how the community as a whole has developed. In fact, while we still have many long-term and longtime residents, most residents today were not even there when the PD text was approved in 1989. No, this is not going to be a quaint country store. This building will have the largest footprint by far of any building on a single lot on the north end. Moreover, only 38% of the lot will be pervious, affecting drainage, which is already a big problem on the north end. The residents are requesting additional conditions and operating guidelines to be applied to this approval, this approved development, to diminish the negative impacts on our community, the neighborhood character, and the quality of life. There is nothing in ordinance that prevents the developer and the county from agreeing to these types of provisions. So examples of the type of guidelines directed at operating hours and conditions of use would be: closed by 8:00 p.m., open no earlier than 7:00 a.m., all outside lights off when the store of the facility is closed, no overnight accommodations, no gas station, not now, not ever, no drive-through service, not now, not ever, no outdoor speakers or outdoor music in this quiet residential neighborhood, no parking or standing off the premises on the county road or right-of-way. Customers, merchants, staff, and tenants must park only on the store property. Flagpole Park, which sits at the entrance to our community and is private property, must be protected from construction trucks, as well as parking by customers and regular trucks, delivery, lawn contractor, at the expense of the applicant, by installation of attractive fencing and/or bollards or something similar. I'd just like to point out, at 12:05 today in front of the Friendly Express, there were 31 vehicles, rigs, or lawn trucks there. The 11 units for personal services which will operate within this development need further restriction or definition, specifically since they will share space with the food services or convenience store. The building is not to be converted to any hotel, B&amp;B, rental housing, condos, restaurant, event center, gym, or recreation center. Original building may not be expanded or additions added. A completion bond should be posted with community development regarding all conditions and permit requirements. A bond actually should be posted with the Hampton Point property owners. This is a matter of financial interest. If the property becomes vacant and without viable economic use for more than 15 months, the building should be removed and property restored. Any changes to the use or operation of the building must receive review in advance by the neighboring communities. All conditions shall run with the land and to any subsequent owner and placed on deeds, mortgages, and other instruments and recorded. We, the residents of Hampton Point, believe these types of conditions should have been applied to the IPC's approval. We are frustrated and disappointed because they weren't even discussed. We, the residents of Hampton Point, your constituents and active Glenn County voters, are requesting that you remand the approval back to the IPC in order to incorporate operating guidelines and conditions for operation that will lessen the negative impact of this facility on our property rights and on our quiet residential neighborhood. And I really want to thank you for taking the time-- ooh, that's five minutes, yes-- take the time to listen to this. I hope you will internalize this request. We are really upset on the north end, and that's hard for the north end to get upset. So, thank you.
Ms. Featherstone, did I see something? Did you send us that list of--
Yes, I did. At the request of one of the commissioners, they asked that I send the petition that was signed by all the folks. I will say that wasn't exhaustive or complete. We spent just a couple of days running around getting those people--
Okay, but we do have that list.
Yes.
I got several other emails today--
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, about 100 or so.
Yes.
Okay, we've got that list.
Yes, you do have that list.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And thank you, Ms. Featherstone. We appreciate you coming forward tonight.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Featherstone, I'm Cap Fendig. We had met, but we have talked over the phone--
Yes, thank you for taking my time.
--and exchanged some information, and we'll follow up to see what there are any options at all at this time.
Okay. I would really appreciate it. The 75 other folks out there in the community would appreciate that. Thank you.
Excuse me. How many people actually live up in the Hampton Point area?
Well, I was very specific to Hampton Point because I'm also the HOA president out there. So, we have 145 current residents within Hampton Point. There are 194 properties, but 145 residents. But a number of the residents also own multiple properties like ourselves. So, it's a number of longstanding-- if you were to look up the definition of St. Simons, I hate to say it, a lot of our residents out there are probably the pillars of this community, longtime folks.
You serve on the Board of Elections as well, do you--
Yes, I do.
I thank you for your service there.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
All right. At this time, I need a motion to approve any consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented with any items that any commissioner wants to pull. I'll form motion for approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. Under general business, we will now receive a presentation from Mr. Michael Burns regarding the broadband plan for Glenn County.
Mr. Chairman, we have Commissioner O'Quinn participating by teleconference, so we need to register his vote as well as part of this process.
Okay, and--
Did you see my hand?
No, sir.
I agree. I vote yea.
And, Mr. O'Quinn, your video seems to be turned off. Speaker's on, video's off.
Okay, there we go.
Hello. I don't know if this is the first time ever that we've had a live commission meeting with a virtual attendee, but Commissioner O'Quinn could not be here tonight, so by this provision, he can indeed be with us. So, item number four now. Mr. Burns, if you would, come forward to the microphone and state your name for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, other county officials, and residents. My name is Michael Burns. I am the CEO and Executive Director of the Community and Colleges Partners Program. It's a nonprofit that was created in the state of Georgia to provide technical assistance to resource-constrained communities at no cost to the communities. I would like to discuss, if I-- with your permission, a concept that we have put together in consultation with the city of Brunswick with respect to broadband. I've presented to the Commissioners essentially an outline of the concept that we're taking a look at. We all understand the importance of broadband. I mean, COVID-19 has been an incredibly difficult occurrence, but the one thing that's come out of it is that we have a much clearer understanding of the importance and the need for broadband in our communities. We know that it impacts economic development. We know that it impacts health outcomes. We know that it impacts educational outcomes and a whole host of other areas. We also know that broadband, while it is often considered a luxury, far too often, we see that it should be actually looked at as an infrastructure, just like water or electricity, something vital for the welfare and the good order of communities. Working with communities, when I had originally created this program four years ago, we took a look at 100 cities across 20 states and determined the number-one issue that communities were struggling with was access to broadband and IT support. In conjunction with trying to address that issue, we created a pilot to try to help address that issue, and this is consistent with our program. Our program engages colleges and universities to provide technical assistance to resource-constrained communities at no cost to the communities, and it's based on the issues that the communities identify. We, in working with the University of West Alabama in Livingston, Alabama, the city of Livingston, and the city of York identified broadband as a key issue that they needed to address, we worked with partners in the federal government, the National Telecommunication Information Agency, to try to put together a plan to help those two cities find a way to move forward. The National Telecommunication Information Agency, or the NTIA, provided training for the University of Alabama to students, senior students, master's students, and a couple PhD students in some key areas of concern with respect to areas that need to be addressed with broadband: economics, education, health, and information technology. The NTIA provided key training and support to those students. They educated them on how to develop a plan for those communities to be able to move forward, and they worked with-- served as technical advisors to the school and to the students throughout the semester to put those plans together. Those plans were put together. The subsequent plans were so good that a local provider provided free Wi-Fi for the downtown area of Livingston, and the school was now subsequently expanding its efforts throughout the county. Having had success in that area, as I moved into my own nonprofit, we decided to continue this effort to address this problem. And currently, we have four pilots that will begin in February. One in North Carolina, two in Alabama, and one in Louisiana. But having had the opportunity to work with Commissioner Booker and address a few issues when I was working with EPA with respect to superfund areas, and knowing that there was an issue with the connectivity and the access to good, consistent, strong broadband access in the city of Brunswick, I reached out as a part of an overall economic development plan we're doing with the mayor to address developing a plan for the city of Brunswick that we could subsequently use to go back and find a way to address that issue. The government is trying to move past just spending money. The government is trying to make sure that it invests money. And we are pushing the government to make sure that when they spend money on broadband, it should be based on communities with plans, so that when a community has a plan for what they need to do, we can make sure that we fund the plan so that it's not just an expenditure, but it's an investment. Furthermore, we want to make sure that we're making communities take a look at the next 15 to 20 years. We want communities to think in terms of gigabytes, not megabytes. We want communities to be able to take a look what they're going to need 15 to 20 years down the road, because you're only going to get infrastructure support from the federal government so often. So we should make those dollars count. So, I've spoken to President Michelle Johnson at Coastal College of Georgia this afternoon, who is strongly in favor of working with us to do this project for the city of Brunswick. But, in the course of having a discussion with Commissioner Booker, we thought it would be in the best interest to actually expand that effort to all of Glenn County. The purpose of the discussion here is to answer any questions that the Commissioners or the citizens have, to provide this concept to you, and to explain what our attempt is to do, is to develop a broadband plan for all of Glenn County. Once that plan is developed, to work in support of other funding, be it state, which I know the government has dedicated $30 million to broadband, with respect to the NTIA, which I know has money for broadband, and with respect to the federal government, which will make broadband part of a trillion-dollar infrastructure program, to make sure that they fund communities with the plans. We're working-- they've worked with the Coastal College of Georgia to provide that plan, to provide another school, to provide assistance to them in the areas where they don't have support, and to provide that to the county at no cost to the county, but to the benefit of the county and its citizens. So, my request to the Commissioners today is to present this concept, to answer your questions, to, with all due order and permission, to be able to come back to you once we've gotten final approval from the Coastal College of Georgia, once we've identified a partner college to work with them, once we've lined up the dates and the times and how we're going to do it, to come back to you once we've organized the plan, the actual execution dates, and actually present to you a plan on how we're going to develop this broadband plan for all of Glenn County. So, if you have any questions, Commissioners or the citizens, please, I'd like to entertain them.
Mr. Burns, we thank you very much for this presentation, and also Commissioner Booker for reaching out and asking him to come be a part of us. First question, is this something that would be appropriate to ask the Board of Education to also hear a presentation on?
Yes, sir, probably would. I mean, as I said earlier, if COVID-19 has certainly showed us the importance of access to broadband with respect to education, there are millions of children that will be one or two years behind. There will be children that will probably-- we will lose because they didn't have access to it. So, yes, Commissioner, I think it would be a good idea. And as I explained to Commissioner Booker, I am happy to return to Brunswick at your request to sit and brief whomever you would like for me to brief.
And how would we outline a program to move forward? Do you have those bullet points, or are those things that you could either share with us or Commissioner Booker so that we can look at moving this forward?
We are in the process of doing the four pilots, as I outlined-- We are in the process of doing the four pilots, as I outlined earlier. I have some additional information that I can provide to Commissioner Booker, things that I'm providing to President Johnson, such as guidelines on how the students are going to prepare and work on that, some additional information from the National Telecommunication Information Agency that I would be happy to share. But, I just want the Commissioners to understand that, with their permission, we'd like to move forward with this concept and come back to you within the next month or two to lay out the exact plan on how we plan on putting this together on behalf of the county. So, if the county, if the county Commissioners are interested in the concept and would like to see us move forward to put this together, we would appreciate their okay, and we will move forward to put that plan together and come back to you, probably, Commissioner, in about a month and a half, two months, with a good detailed plan exactly on how we're going to execute, understanding we'll probably start in the fall semester, so we're talking about starting September.
And with that, Commissioners, open the floor. Any questions, any discussion?
We, we had an email today from Catherine, and it said, "The Governor's broadband initiative has been included in the budget this year for the state," so this may be something to pursue.
Yeah, the Governor has identified $30 million in support of broadband projects, which is a good start. I think that the, what you will need for Glen County may or may not be more than that, but with all due respect, Commissioner, I want to make sure I put something together for Glen County, on behalf of Glen County, that Glen County approves. My program was created to provide communities what they need, not what we want to give them. So, this is, that's why we're working with the Coastal College, that's why we're working with Commissioner Booker and the mayor, because it's got to be your plan, not our plan. So, we hope that once these plans are identified, there will be a potpourri of funds. The Governor's funds will be allocated. I know that the National Telecommunication Information Agency has funds that are being allocated. I know the USDA is going to be allocating money to broadband. We believe that if you've got a plan in hand and know what it's going to cost and what you can do with it, and what you're going to actually provide your citizens, you are much better positioned to go after those resources than people that don't. That's what we want to try to do.
Well, Mr. Burns, I can't begin to tell you how much I don't know about broadband, so we, if, with the consent of the Commission, then we can move forward on inviting you to, to return with us.
Yeah, I would suggest just make sure, and Allen will be in the session tomorrow morning, to have him working with the staff to move things forward.
All right.
I think that we'll be the first, one of the first prepared, so we should be one of the first to receive funding. And as I looked at the needs, I started thinking about our code and then the rural part of our county, and what development is available there. I know that myself and Commissioner Tosterson has talked a lot about that as well, so we think that this will be a period for development for the entire county.
Yes, sir, and thank you for mentioning the rural, Commissioner Booker, because we had some masters of public health students at Emory take a look at the impact of COVID-19 in rural areas that don't have access to broadband, and found out that the death rate was 99% higher than those that did have access. So we know that this makes a difference. And you will be, with all due respect, Commissioners, the first county in Georgia that we've actually put this plan together for, so always good to be the first, I think, so.
Mr. Monford, do we need a vote on this, or the consensus is all we need for tonight to move forward? Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Burns, thank you so much for bringing this to us tonight and for the information that you've shared, and we'll look forward to the next information that comes.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, Alex, I know it's hard to hear in here, y'all's application was approved, so y'all, y'all, you may, you may not have heard or understood it, but it was approved, so you're, you're good to go, all right? If you want to stay the whole meeting, we love having you, but you can head out.
All right. Item number five is consider approving a proposal from the Georgia Associations of Chief of Police to conduct a search for a new police chief, and, Mr. Hours, you have that report.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. The item on the agenda tonight for your consideration is whether or not to retain a firm, an outside firm, to conduct a search for a new chief of police. And I think the first question is whether or not an outside firm is needed to conduct a search. And I believe one is. Our county Human Resources Department does an excellent job with the development of brochure, with the development of recruiting process, but in this particular situation, as we did with the fire chief a few years ago, we selected an outside firm to assist us with the recruitment of a new fire chief. The police chief, as we all know, is one of the most important positions in Glen County government, and for a thorough search, for one that includes applicant assessments that's very detailed, I believe it's important to use an outside firm. So that, that's the first question I wanted to, to address. With that, in anticipation of Chief Wiggins' retirement, received four proposals. One was from Slavon Management Consultants, which the county has used in the past. One was from the Mercer Group, which is a national firm. One was from the Georgia Chiefs, Police Chiefs Association, who has done numerous police chief searches throughout Georgia. And then the last one was from Noble. Noble is the National Black Law Enforcement Association, that's very well-respected. Theirs is a little bit unique, and the reason why is because they were brought to us by the Initiative. And the Initiative is a nonprofit organization based out of Washington, D.C., that main focus and interest is in providing for community policing. And they would actually fund, they have proposed to fund the cost of the Noble proposal. Noble proposal is $10,000, and the Initiative would actually fund that. What is before you tonight is a consideration to, to select the Georgia Chiefs Association for, for the search. And I may add as well that each, each of these firms, listen, excuse me, each of the four firms, they, they do searches, that's their, their main business. They all do an outstanding job and all have a track record of providing excellent candidates. The Georgia Chiefs Association, the reason why I'm recommending that is because of their understanding of Georgia, our state, their understanding of what Glen County has been through in the last couple of years, especially in the last year with our police department, and their testing methods. They would conduct a complete search, including the advertisement, the selection of the candidates. They would also advertise with Noble, as well as other professional organizations, to, you know, get a large pool of candidates, you know, not only in Georgia but nationally, it should be a national search. And then, they would bring to Glen County several candidates, perhaps eight to 10 candidates. The county would narrow this down. And then the ones that are selected would spend an entire day at the Chiefs Association offices, where they would be assessed, tested, and interviewed and reviewed, and that information will be provided back to Glen County as we continue with the interview process. But, as outlined in their proposal, their team is made up of law enforcement, individuals with law enforcement background and experience in Georgia and elsewhere, most of them with at least the ranking of chief in other communities. So that's what's before you tonight. Again, each of the firms is well-qualified. The Chiefs Association fee is between $7,000 and $10,000, depending on the number of candidates that are chosen to interview. But they, I believe they're ready to go to work, and whether you select the Chiefs Association or one of the other firms, the estimated time for the search from beginning to completion is 90 to 120 days. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions the Board may have.
Commissioners, open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, since Commissioner O'Quinn's not here, I understand that Georgia Chiefs also uses Noble as a search part. Am I correct, David?
They, they will advertise the opening through Noble's network, through the International Association Chief of Police, and other professional organizations, so we will, our advertisement, our job opening will be put through, on multiple organizations for a very wide net, to attract as many applicants as possible.
And, and this is what the police advisory panel would like to see, Georgia Chiefs, correct?
Well, I don't, the, the police advisory panel never took an official vote on it. I've, I've had some informal discussions with some of the members. I did some of the initial legwork on the Association of Chief of Police. I think, you know, and then when I, when I got the legwork, I passed it on to County Manager Hours. I was impressed with their testing methodology, the fact that they know the history of our department, not just in the last two years, but going back 10 years. I mean, if we really want to know, to think about it, they have a long understanding of the history and the issues that have happened in the last 10 years. They're the, they are the accreditation agency for the police department, so they're well-aware of our needs and what's going to be needed in order to, to regain our accreditation. But, so I'm really, for me personally, comfortable in recommending them to you, gentlemen, because of the, of those facts, and the fact that it's an extensive testing regiment, in which we'll have, if you read the report, it looks, you know, as well as many as three or four chief of police, active chief of police reviewing the, the oral section of the testing, and providing a written number. They'll have an evaluator who is of chief of police rank, or of chief of police rank to do, to grade the written aspect of it. So, I think if we can get as many eyes as possible evaluating the candidates, it's going to be helpful for us to make a very informed decision. I think it's incumbent upon us as a Commission also, that as we interact with the Georgia Chief of Police, the association on this search, that we make it clear that we want community-based policing. We want a, our candidates need to be able to be, understand that and implement that in our community, and, and that we want a candidate who is willing to not only talk to, you know, Commissioners, but will go out into the community and be a part of the community, engaging with all different groups of folks in the, in the community, so that he can fully understand what's going on, going on in our community. And it's not going to be one person that's going to make it community-based. It's going to be us as a Board of Commissioners, making sure that the chief of police and the police department are doing community-based policing. This isn't, we bring one person in, we turn it over, and it's done. It's us being, being diligent and making sure that that's happening, talking to our constituents, talking to others in the community, to make sure that our police department is working well within our community, and that there are issues that need to be brought forward. So, I, I'm very comfortable recommending this to you, gentlemen, and, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer what I can.
Mr. Chairman, I, right there, and a couple things. Can you all hear me?
That's better, thank you.
First, let me ask Mr. Hours, what's the process used to hire John Powell?
Commissioner Booker, if I remember correctly, the Human Resources Direct, Department advertised the position, and we received applications and interviews for him.
Okay. Where, so, after the, you all just evaluated, you evaluated the applicants and then chose from among the, the applicants, so who narrowed it down? Did you narrow it, did you, so you looked at every applicant?
Yes, sir, and I believe I interviewed three. Two were, were from outside Glen County. I know one was from outside Georgia, I can't remember about the other one.
Okay. And, and so this time, you feel like that there's a need to go outside of that process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and why is that, again?
To get a broad pool of candidates.
Mr. Hours, would you pull your mic just a little closer to you?
Yes, sir. To get a broad pool of candidates, the, the candidate pool we had back in 2018, I believe, was very limited. It was not that broad. And then, the additional item is the testing services, the assessment of applicants. We did not, we, we had a very thorough background check, that the Human Resources Department used an outside firm, but we did not conduct the assessment, which I believe is important for this position.
Okay, so the recruitment of John Powell was a flawed process, then?
I wouldn't say it was flawed. It was a process we used, but I believe that this time, the process needs to be expanded and more thorough.
And I agree with you on that. Was, the, the three candidates that you interviewed, was it a diversified pool? Were any of them African-American women or Latino?
No, sir.
Okay. And, and so you feel like, because of the testing instrument, you and, I guess Commissioner O'Quinn feel, the testing instrument that the Chiefs of Police Association uses is the determining factor, since you said all four of them are qualified proposals, correct? Organizations that do a search?
Commissioner Booker, I believe it's one of the determining factors, like I said earlier, the fact that the Chiefs Association knows Glen County, and as Commissioner O'Quinn pointed out, they not only, you know, know us for the last two years, but know us for, for many years, that, the fact that they have on their team chiefs of police who are knowledgeable about community policing, the fact that they will bring to us a diverse group of candidates, and, and then...
How do you know that? That they will bring a diverse group of candidates? Because they list with, with Noble? Because Noble, Noble is also, I mean, Noble will bring a diverse group of candidates as well. I mean, they're not just recruiting African-Americans.
Right. Well, from a practical standpoint, the candidate pool is what it is. You know, our job is to advertise the position. We can't control who applies, you know, who applies to the position, certainly.
Well, you can impact the recruitment, the pool. I mean, and I'm sure you, we could bring some HR people in here to, to really back that up.
And I believe the Chiefs Association will, will do everything they can, as well as the other, other firms, to impact the pool. But, at the end of the day, it's who applies, and, and, you know, our goal is for them to be diverse, to have experience with community-oriented policing, because that's part of the 21st century policing practices, and certainly the intent of this board. policing practices, and certainly the intent of this board. And so I believe that the Georgia Chiefs Association will bring in a diverse pool of candidates.
Yeah, I really doubt that it will be with the mentality of a community service, really, mentality versus a warrior mentality. If you have a group of folk who've been in law enforcement that long, and they're seeking, because everybody's idea of community policing is not the same. And that was the purpose of bringing the initiative in, something that, in particular, the black community, which is most impacted by this, by the concept of community policing. And to choose somebody other than something that the black community would be comfortable with, I think it's the wrong way to go. I really think that we're setting ourselves up for other issues by going a different way. And talking about testing and folk who have 40 years in the old way of policing, I don't think it's going to get us there.
Commissioners, any other input?
Mr. Chairman, David, thank you for joining us in such a ghostly appearance tonight. Everybody says this courthouse is haunted. He might be proving that. Good apparition there. You've worked with the committee for quite a while on this issue, and your work is based and summed up in this presentation, really, is that it's what you feel is the best way for us to move and offers the broadest expanse for all concerns to find the next best candidate to be the chief of Glen County Police. Is that correct?
That's my personal opinion. I feel like, I feel very comfortable that we're going to have a good pool of candidates. I believe there'll be a diverse pool of candidates. I believe, for me personally, whether it's a male or female, African-American, white, Hispanic, whoever that next police chief is going to be, it will be incumbent upon us to ensure that they are actually practicing community-based policing. And I certainly understand where Commissioner Booker's coming from, and the idea of wanting to make sure that we don't bring someone in with a warrior mentality, and I don't want that either. I want to have someone who is going to lead that department with the motto that we protect and serve. And I respect the work that Noble has done. I think they do a great job. I know that in my conversations with the Georgia Association of Chief of Police, that they will advertise on Noble's network. So I believe we'll get a diverse group of candidates. And you know what? If we go through the search and we don't find the right one, we start again. But I believe this won't, that won't be the case. I believe we'll find a candidate who will be able to lead our police department forward and be able to work within our community. We have got to have a candidate or a police chief whose attitude is, I'm reaching out into this community to develop relationships and working with people, working with all the groups. We'll want to make sure that that's what their intention. It will be us, to us as a board of commissioners, to make sure, to hold them accountable to doing that.
And I think that the important message you said is, even though the Association Chief Police is taking the lead, that doesn't prevent Noble or any other association or other searchers to present and advertise and let other candidates know and work with candidates to apply for this job, correct?
Yeah, I don't know, when you were saying work with, but my understanding is that they will advertise through Noble's network. They have worked with Noble in the past, as well as others, the Association, International Association Chief of Police. They will work with multiple groups to make sure that our job opening is out there for all to see and helping the recruitment.
Well, I think that we can promise this community, which is certainly feels very divided and betrayed and hurt by all the incidents that have happened over this past year, locally as well as nationally, and I think that this group will be committed to healing our community of these issues. We've had a great breach of conduct and mistrust and people killed. So I'm confident that what you've put up and done will present us a broad-based, select group of adequate candidates. So unless there's further discussion, I'll make a motion to move ahead with this. But I just want to say that I know that this commission is committed to doing some healing work and be inclusive. But you got to pick a lead horse to begin the process, and I think we can, we can do that and trust that the right candidates have come.
Commissioner Fendig, I agree that we need to begin the healing, but this is not the way to do it. The way to do it would be to accept initiatives, proposal, get with them, to work with around the testing, if we felt that we needed that written test. I'm sure they would be willing to work with them, just like they say that they've worked with Noble. And that would be something to assure the black community that we're serious about healing, but this is not the way to do it.
Gentlemen, any other discussion?
Okay. And thank you for the extensive amount of work that you've done and that we will continue to do. So I'll make a motion to select the Georgia Association Chiefs of Police to conduct the search for a new chief of police.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by raising the right hand, and David, if you would so vote. That looks like one, two, three, four, five in favor. Those that are opposed, two. The motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, consider further discussion regarding the project list for the special purposes, local option, sales tax, as necessary tonight. And I would like to open this discussion by offering a personal apology. It was brought to our attention this afternoon that we did not get our list out. The revised list, as early as we had thought, that will fall fully on me. I had thought I had asked for that to go forward, but it appears what I was actually authorizing was the list to the commissioners. So that's on me. I apologize. I will add that the list that is published is substantially the same as the list that got posted late this afternoon. So it's out there. We're tweaking this. It's also important to add that this is not a final list, even as it stands. We are continuing to get input. We still have quotes coming in from different sources on verifying our bid amounts. To my knowledge, as it stands right now, there were very few changes from the list that was in our Tuesday discussion. But we will move forward and open the floor. We will, we will start with the list again and start with our projects. There have been a few tweaks. So again, it's a $68 million, $500,000 projected SPOST. The City of Brunswick would receive $13 million, $234,200. The Joint Water and Sewer Commission would receive $15 million. The Jekyll Island Authority revised their list down to $2.5 million. That is one of the changes. That would leave Glen County with $37 million, $765,800. Then we'll start with the projects. Item number one is the Frederica Sea Island Intersection, $6 million. Any discussion? The Canal Road, Glencoe Parkway Phase II, project, $2 million, $500,000. Any discussion? Item number three, Old Jessup Canal Road Intersection, $2 million.
Mr. Chairman, that is in my district. I've been out there numerous times this week, and I am, I have no doubt in my mind that we can spend $2 million out there doing something, but I'm not sure what we got when we get through. We are taking traffic off a two-lane road and putting it on a two-lane road, and until we, four-lane Canal Road from Old Jessup Road to Spur, I just cannot envision spending $2 million on that intersection. We debated putting a light there several years ago, and we did that. We didn't, everybody didn't even think we needed a traffic light there. Well, three times today, I was the only car sitting at the traffic light, and that was all three intersections. And I just, I would like to see us pull that $2 million from that project. I just don't. And the other thing is, we've got a significant development. I know we haven't heard anything in a while, probably due to the pandemic, but there could be another access road coming through that Boswell Farm from the Spur to Old Jessup Highway. So all those things are, I think, should be considered, but the fact, the matter of spending $2 million at that intersection, I just, for the life of me, I can't see what we're going to accomplish when we, at the end of the day.
Thank you, Commissioner Bronson. Is there any other discussion on this item? And keeping in mind that this is not a vote tonight on any of these issues, certainly not a line item vote, but are there any other commissioners that would like to see this removed from the list?
I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Bronson. I travel that route, and it backs up, but it's usually busy times of the day, and as we spoke the other day, there's a lake on one side and a house on the other. I don't know much you can do there.
All right. And again, this is a working list. I want to make sure that everyone understands. We're not voting to take this off the list, but further discussion may move it, and seems to be some interest to do that. Item number four, Summers Point, $1.3 million. That is a slight revision based on estimates that came in. Any discussion on that? Item number five is the Perilene Box Cover. That is a slight increase from $1.3 million. Discussion?
It's, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that that will help the area back where Jessica Lane and all is at, and I know they have flooding problems, so I think that million three is well spent.
Any other discussion? Item number six is the St. Simon's Village Phase II Drainage, $1 million. And I think we spoke at our Tuesday meeting that this is the second phase of the village drainage system. We've had immense help in the Phase One. This will give it some redundancy and for the super-heavy storms, and that's, that's the dollar amount of that project. Any other discussion? Item number seven is the Brunswick Airport Fire Station Number Five, $3.5 million. Again, that is, will be matched with FAA funds.
Mr. Chairman, when Mr. Tosses and I visited the fire department, he was telling us that that area out there along Harriedriggers is a growth corridor right now, and really that there's no protection other than the small station that's there. So if the FAA is going to pay part of this because of the airport, I think it should be done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion on this? Under Recreation, item number eight is the Blath Island Regional Park, $1.5 million.
The biggest thing here is a master plan for that park. I mean, if we go in and just put 50 more sites in, not with a direction, I know that it needs the funding, and it probably needs more than a million five, but the way, the way I see it in that district, this is, this is a necessary item. It probably could use a little more, but...
Any other discussion on the Blath Island Regional Park? Item number nine is the Coast Guard Beach, $2.5 million.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to comment on that one. Several thousand years ago, the good Lord blessed this community immeasurably, and he didn't bless many. He gave us an ocean, and we've done very, very little over the years to capitalize on that tremendous gift that we bestowed. I think the funding for this Coast Guard master plan is the most significant item on this entire list, because it has all the elements of a SPOST. It's got infrastructure, it's got drainage, it's got paving, it's got bathhouses, it's got a public safety element, which is very important, and is also an infrastructure project. I think it's even got economic development implications. Any CEO that's going to make a sizable investment in this community and move a business here, I think is going to visit our number-one asset, and he's going to look at how we manage our number-one asset, and that would be the Atlantic Ocean out there off our beaches. And so I think that that could be a decision-making process. The thing that I think that we've got to understand, that this isn't a District Two project. This is not about St. Simon's Island. People that live on St. Simon's Island can put on their tennis shoes or get on their bicycle and ride to the beach. This is about a District One project, it's about a District Three project, it's about a District Four project, and it's about a District Five project. You got to, if you live in Sterling, you either got to be riding on the Tour de France or get in your car and drive to the beach on St. Simon's, and you got to find a place to park over there. I think that the thing that is compelling, that drives the issue of doing this project in its entirety, is the potential to create revenue in charging for visitor parking. And that revenue, I think, last time I looked, is, you know, projected to be upward of $600,000 a year. That'll certainly pay for the maintenance of the park and will also provide for the public safety element, which is going to get more and more critical as people, as people visit the beach. You know, our neighbors to the north at Tybee Island have been extraordinarily successful in parking fees, and our neighbor here in our own community, Jekyll Island Authority, has been extraordinarily successful in generating parking fees, and I think we can as well. So this, this project not only does those things, it's a return on investment. And you don't see many infrastructure projects that have a return on investment. Even a roundabout, one day is going to have to be repaved. And so I think this provides an income stream for perpetuity, just like SPOST. I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, it's the greatest tax that you can levy on anybody because it's paid by, part of it's paid by visitors. I think this tax is equally just. And the fact of the matter is, it's a $4.8 billion project, and if it's not done in its entirety, that parking element probably isn't going to come to fruition. So the folks over there are telling me that if we can provide $4 million investment, that they will put up a million. And there's not another project on here that with anybody standing in the gateway, they are ready to write a million-dollar check. And so they are committed to that. The CVB is committed to that, and the Historical Society is committed to that million dollars. And frankly, I'd like to see part of the money that we save... And frankly, I'd like to see part of the money that we save out there at the intersection of Old Jessup Highway and Canal Road transferred to the Coast Guard Master Plan to put this project to bed and get it done. That's all I got to say. There have been, the other thing is, there have been 12 town hall meetings on this project. The public input has been greater than any project that's probably ever done in Glen County. Over 100 people have been involved in the planning of this master plan. So, this isn't four or five people getting together on St. Simons or somewhere and saying, "Hey, let's enhance this beach." And the public safety element can't be overstated. So, with that, I would like to see us provide another million and a half dollars there to get this project done.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Brunson. He is asking that we raise that $2.5 to $4 million. Is there any other discussion on that tonight?
Commissioner Brunson, when we talk about parking fees, will those fees be applicable to people of the county?
My understanding of that is it would strictly be parking fees for out-of-town people. There would be some kind of pass or whatever for locals that would not be required to pay a parking fee. And much as I think Tybee Island, I'm not real familiar with that, but I think that's the way they work it there. So, it would be a parking fee for those people from out of town that are coming to the beach, that are leaving their trash and enjoying our public safety over there, which is costing Lisa millions of dollars to, you know, take these people, hopefully take these people out of the water when they get in trouble. So, it would be, my vision of that would be just out of town tourists.
Could we ask Lisa to come up? I want to, the question I want to ask, and you may have told me this, but the cost for the lifeguards in a season is...
Well, right now, the beach operations budget in total, which is majority of personnel, is around $215,000 for the Coast Guard Massengill area, that whole area, for the season.
Okay. So, would it increase with this park? Would you have to put more people on? I know we have to address Ghuls Inlet, but would you see that budget have to increase? Because there's going to be upkeep on this park of, I think I was quoted, $150,000 a year. That's the cleaning, keeping the parking lot out. But as far as lifeguards, would you have to have more lifeguards? Would you have to have...
I don't think we would necessarily have to have more lifeguards. That would be more of if we expanded the hours of guarding or if we expanded the peak season and expanded that a little more.
My question is because of the public safety issue and the tower that they want to put there.
If a life-saving tower is constructed and needs to be manned, then yes, there would be some operating costs certainly associated with staffing a lifeguard tower and the communications.
So, just a shot in the dark would be, would it double your budget or would it add 100?
Maybe 100, maybe 75 to 100,000 potentially to have that facility staff. The cleaning of the park and the beach access and some of that, that is under the Public Works Department, so Dave might be able to talk about what costs would be associated with that.
Okay. But I'm mainly interested in how much more, I know the trouble you have finding lifeguards anyway.
Yes, sir.
So, that was, and my understanding is the revenue off this could be...
I'm sorry, Commissioner. The projected generating fee would be $450,000. It would be available for life-saving and another $150,000 for park maintenance, are the projections from the parking assessment that was done. And a lot of time went into that, Council. What did you want to talk about?
Commissioners, this may be a conversation for another day or another evening, maybe in a work session, but to address the question or issue of fees at that park or any fees. I mean, parking fees are user fees essentially. They are there to assess the users of that parking spot or the parking lot to be used to go back into the resources, roads, in this case, beach accesses. So, I think it's legally problematic and I'm aware that some communities have already done this or have done it in Georgia, but I think it's legally problematic to distinguish between different groups for a user fee like that. This is not a tax per se. This is a user fee for the users of those parking spots, parking lots, et cetera. So, going for, you know, our recommendation would be, even if you have an annual pass that you have for, you know, for a fee annually or monthly or weekly, you apply that equally to, you know, visitors, guests, residents alike.
Do you mean that an annual pass has got to be the same for a resident as it is for a visitor?
I would suggest that. Now, you can certainly break that down to a daily pass, a weekly pass, or monthly or annually. Again, we're talking about, this is a fee applied to the users of that area, whether it's for Coast Guard parking or any other parking space.
Well, how does Jekyll work that?
Jekyll is an authority, has its own rules. I would have to check their governing, enabling legislation.
I'm sure they're controlled by the state, but the, I mean, there was talk at one time about a toll on the causeway, as I recall, and there being some kind of nominal pass for residents of Glen County that are paying county taxes here.
Right. And I understand when the toll was still at the causeway, you could buy an annual pass, but I think that applied, the annual pass applied equally to anyone who wanted to buy the pass for a year and did not necessarily distinguish between residents and non-residents. It was applied equally. So, anyone who wanted to buy it for $35, if you will, or whatever it was, could buy that. Now, I'm not as familiar with Jekyll, but I think residents also pay a fee. And if you want to buy an annual fee, you know, they'll let you for that. So, I just wanted to point that out before we got too far down that road.
Well, let's do a little research on that and find out if there's a way that we could affect having a parking fee that's not where Glen County taxpayer doesn't have the same burden as someone that's just here for the day.
Sure. I'll be glad to report back up to the Commissioner on that.
Commissioners, that's a topic for another day, but it's a doable thing. I'm prepared for the future.
It ought to be doable. If it's not, it ought to be.
Let's get back to the park here I have in my hands. Sort of like, you know, how our traffic planning goes sometimes, we get studies and studies and studies. I've got a plan from 2011, 2014, 2018, and then the previous commission master plan, which they voted on in April 2018. I had the great privilege to be involved in the renovation of Neptune Park. And our parks are just like our roads. They're getting overrun. If you spend a lot of time at Neptune Park, which I do, it's getting overrun. It's busy. And this park, as you said, Commissioner Brunson, appropriately, is the place where people can go to the beach. When you come to St. Simons, I'm not talking about island residents, I'm talking about visitors, whether it be the rest of our county's citizens or those from out of town, let's just think real clearly, where can you go to go to the beach? Massengill, which has got limited access, Ghuls Inlet, which is a lot less parking area and dangerous, and then this park. And, you know, we're talking about making improvements for the future. And this project is worthy of that effort. It's time for it. It's needed for it. And I think, again, like we're doing, we're trying to put our best foot forward on things. And I think the voters can have that choice when it comes to make that decision. I don't think I'm afraid of that. I have confidence in the voters. And this is time for this project to be done for the benefit of our county and the visitors that come. And of course, I've been reluctant to push it hard because we're all a new group trying to do it, but truth be spoken, here's a number of years and a number of efforts that previous commissions could have acted on and didn't. It's our time to step up and deliver. And that delivering means you've got a good plan, it's been voted on, studied, and ready to go. And the voters will decide whether they want the improvements at that beach and the access to that beach and that kind of park. And so, I have confidence that it's the right plan and I'm not afraid to let the voters have a chance to say what they want to do, like all of these projects. We've done our good due diligence. Most of this list that we've done is previous already from previous plots, which got delayed last year, which some of y'all were a part of and made that decision. And we're here, people think we're rushing it, but we're not. We're just following up what previous commissions have already done the work on. And this is our jewel. And when we do it, we do it right. If we piecemeal it, well, that's going to be hard.
Commissioner, I think if we piecemeal it, we have to make a decision whether we want to park in a mud puddle or save lives. And if we piecemeal it, I don't think we can do both.
Okay. Well, it's a discussion, it's not a final list, as the chairman says, so we've had a good public discussion about it and everybody continued to weigh in.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, I guess I looked at this a little differently when we had $2 million that was taken off by Commissioner Brunson.
Mr. Booker, would you mind? I'm sorry, but it really does muffle.
What I was saying is that when Commissioner Brunson pulled the other project of Old Jessup and Canal, the $2 million, I looked at it a little different. I'm in support of the Coast Guard plan. I voted for the other stuff that we've done over there and full support of it. However, I just think that we need to look at investing in some other jewels in our community as a way to manage growth on the island. We talk about it all the time. And if there were other things invested in on the mainland, like Blithe Island, we have 1,100 acres there and, you know, we don't use that much of it. And there are a number of other things that we could do there to draw people there for recreational uses and to bring in revenue. I also think that Selden Park as well. We totally miss the historic value and asset of our African-American historic preservation assets here. We've had this state down here, they put together a report for us, talked about the value of it. They talked about the revenue that it brings in for the state. So, it's not just the historic value, but these things bring in revenue. Selden Park, the project Rizley, Rizley High, that project easily. And these will have more benefit to the most in need. And I don't even think that that was a real thought, a real concern. Again, I support the Coast Guard and this plan and moving forward, but, you know, we have $2 million. I'd like to see it invested more in Blithe Island, Selden Park, and Rizley than, because I know we're going to do the Coast Guard, we're going to move forward with that. But these other ones, seems like they're just left behind and we're not on the mainland. We don't put as much emphasis. And the revenue from these things, I think, would be equal or more if we invest in them.
Commissioners, any other discussion on item nine, Coast Guard Beach? Commissioner Brunson and I think Commissioner Fendiger both supporting adding one and a half. Commissioner Booker has voiced his opinion to add money in other parks. Item number 10 is North Glen Park, $1 million. Any discussion? Item number 11 is Selden Park, $500,000.
Yeah, I would at least like to see another $250,000 for park improvements there.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker. Any other discussion on Selden Park?
Commissioner, out of the spirit of cooperation, I've got a little money left over from my $2 million there at that intersection. We need just a million-five. I would contribute you $250,000. I can't contribute anything, but I'll support it if that would, that'd make you feel better.
Item number 12 is the Courthouse Complex Assessment Design, $2 million. Item number 13 is the St. Simons Gateway Design, $1.5 million. I believe we got in a quote today that is under that estimate, so it might be that we can revise that and reallocate.
You know what it was?
Mr. Howes, I think I remember what it was, but do you have that email right in front of you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's approximately $600,000. That's on the gateway?
On the St. Simons Gateway, I remember it being a little more than that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Howes, what are you saying? Is it just $600,000 or me?
That was for the study and design components of that, certainly no construction element to that.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion on the gateway design? For point of reference, that came in very late this afternoon. Item number 14, Glencoe Parkway Widening Design, $800,000.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is not so much one of those projects specifically, but just as a general reminder that once the voters approve these projects and they make the final list, then they have to be completed. So, projects cannot be abandoned with the exception of putting it back to the voters, such as with Oglethorpe Center. But once they approve this, even though this is just the design phase, once they approve it, those projects must be completed by law.
We understand that. Thank you, sir. And I think all of us understand that the gateway at St. Simons is going to need improvement. So, next one is Glencoe Parkway Widening Design, $800,000. Did we, any discussion there? North Glen Industrial Park, $2.5 million. St. Simons Airfield Safety and Improvement, $800,000. Brunswick Airport Calibration Pad, $300,000. We talked about both of those being a requirement. The St. Simons Safety Pad is a requirement from the FAA to maintain safety standards at the St. Simons Airport. The Brunswick Airport Calibration Pad is to, an actual pad with compass calibration on it to set GPS and things for... on it to set GPS and things for international flight, which would be a benefit to our Gulf Stream out there and other aviation industries in, in that area and those that may come. The next item is the Elmig Road Repaving. We've got a figure of $3 million here. The Old Cypress Mill Road Sidewalk Project, $600,000. I think that was added in Tuesday's meeting. I think it was on Tuesday's list. The next is the Waterfront Park Project with the city. This is a cooperative exploratory effort to consider the possibility of putting a waterfront feature down. That's not, that's not recreational. That is, that is a project for a riverwalk kind of project, not, not projects that's ever been brought forth before, looking at the possibility of developing a riverfront. And that is, that is all.
Mr. Chairman, I really, I'm not sure if, I'm, I'm not, I don't know if I can support this in my district, because I think that we need to look at an overall development plan for the waterfront instead of trying to piecemeal it. And I think that if we can recruit developers, and I have two developers right now that are interested, they'll pay for this, any kind of design, then I think we can, we can move this somewhere else. I believe, think they have this for, for a plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker. And certainly worth consideration if we can bring developers in. Any other discussion there? Next is the I-95 Beautification Project, $1,350,000. This is signage on I-95 as you enter into Glen County from the north end to south.
Mr. Chairman.
To accent our exits as, as we come into Glen County.
The number 18 is, is basically a beautification of those exits into the county. I don't really have an issue with them, other than, once we do it, we're going to have to maintain them. So that's a cost that, you know, if it's $1,350,000 to do it, it's going to have to be maintained. So you know the state and the federal government won't do it. I, I like the signage, number 19. And, you know, if, if the commission decides to go with number 18, I'm okay with it. But I just don't see, you know, if we're going to put the money on St. Simon's, we need to, and I understand we moved from Canal Road, but I just, you know, I don't know how many people go, wow, we've got, we've got a nice landscaped exit here. Most people get off because they need food, they need gas, they need a place to stay. And that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I'm not 100% sure, but we'd have to clarify this with the CBB, but I think there's an opportunity for them to help in the upkeep. The design of that would be using native vegetation in, in such that hopefully the maintenance would not be too laborious. I don't think if someone had mentioned about planting flowers up and down the ramps, I don't think that's the case. It is, it is using more natural vegetation to accent the off-ramps, to make them more inviting, to benefit the businesses up and down I-95 that attract tourists, attract travelers that need to stop. You know, people coming to St. Simon's generally are not stopping at those established apartments as they get off I-95 to get gas or fuel or stay overnight. They're going on to the, to the beach destination. There are a lot of folks that come up and down the interstate that need the opportunity or looking for a good, inviting, clean place to pull over, to stop, to get food, to take a restroom break, all those good things. And this, this would allow those three exits to have more curb appeal than, than the surrounding counties and communities up and down, north and south of us. So I, I think that your, your question is legitimate about cost and upkeep. I think we need to have a further conversation with CBB, since it does benefit those folks, it does affect the bed tax. Maybe we can find some compromise there and work something out in regards to the upkeep of it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would suggest, because my concern is, when, when I choose an exit to get off, it's for what they have there. If I want to eat, use the restroom, I think it's clean, those things. And I think they're doing that with some of the renovations of the hotels. And so it's what is offered there, I think is going to be the number one. Beautification, I do think matters, but for me, I would rather see us put a million dollars into the Coast Guard project than a million three into this beautification project.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other?
I'll just say one thing on, on the signage part, being that I am in the tour business every day, that probably 30, 35% of my clientele that shows up every day are people that were driving down the interstate and made a random choice to stop and come see our area. And so those, not only outdoor advertising signs, but having a nice area draws people in. And then most of those people wind up asking me, where do I stay? Or they go back out to the interstate to continue their journey south or north. So it's, it's, we get a lot into our community, into downtown Brunswick, into the islands, pulling off those interstates that necessarily didn't plan on doing it.
Mr. Fendig, I, I agree with eight, 19, and 20. On 18, and I understand what David's saying, but, you know, when you come into Brunswick, you come down the spur, down 17, what do you see? You see an abandoned hotel that's in shambles. You come down, you go by the old paint and varnish place, and on the right, you've got an old hotel. So that's, that's just my point. I don't, I don't see the, the planning, but, you know, if that, if that's the will of the commission, I'm fine.
Well, I think that we-
I just want it on record that, that I don't see that part of it. I see the signage and I see the wayfinding signage. I just don't see the dressed-up part.
Well, I think-
And David and I disagree on this, but, you know, we can agree on everything. Thank you.
Yeah, it's no problem, but I, I think we're committed to clean up. We've all talked, and I think those property owners have let their property go derelict, you know, but we're, this is first on the table. So, thanks.
Item number, the last item on that side is the wayfinding signage, that is to directional signage that would enhance our community. That's a $300,000 item. Any discussion on that? On the side of projects for consideration, and these still have as much value as the column on the left, the North Harrington Sidewalk of $500,000. I think at this point, there's not been enough interest in Harry Drigger's Highway 17 intersection and with the prospect of GDOT expanding Highway 17, that this could probably wait to a later time. Still has a $0 amount to it. Canal Road, Old Jessup Spur, $450,000. Any discussion? Fourth Street Sidewalk Repair, in parentheses, could be done in phases, it's $1,700,000.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Austin has told me for $300,000 or so, he could really clean up that sidewalk down there by the college and take it down possibly to the stadium, which would offer the college students and the public access along Fourth Street there for about $300,000. If they want to consider that, we've got the money. And, and do it in phases, obviously.
Any other discussion on that item?
So you're saying, take this from 1.7 to 300?
1.7, took it all the way to 17. Took it all the way to 17, is that right, Dave? And this 300 will just clean up that area there next to the college, which is kind of in a disarray, the sidewalk at least.
Dave Austin, Public Works. So you build up a lot of cost with the piping of the ditch. So if you, if you stop right there at the stadium, at the health department, then you're not piping the ditch. The ditch piping beyond that is what, what really elevates the cost in the project. What we'd like to do is get that sidewalk away from the road a little bit, off the road, and then back there and wider. It's all, it's all broken up. But that's, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Next item under consideration was the Ballard Fire Station of $6 million. And after that comes the Sea Island Road Drainage Ditch Phase Two, $600,000. And then the Emmanuel Church Road Sidewalk, again, could be done in phases, but its, its full cost would be 1.8 million.
Mr. Chairman, I know the folks out on North Harrington want their sidewalks, but the people on Emmanuel Church Road would like sidewalks. So, you know, it's, 1.8 million's a lot of money for sidewalk. But $500,000 is two, because if I'm correct, Dave, that's about a mile of sidewalk, nine tenths of a mile on the North Harrington, or is it? I'm sorry.
They get, they get costed out at, at about $100 a lineal foot. So the, the one at North Harrington is, you know, $100 a lineal foot. It's all North Harrington and then the Harrington piece connects all the Harringtons up, north, south, and Harrington Drive. And the one on Emmanuel Church is over 16, 16,000 lineal feet, three, three miles or so. But, you know, you could, we could pick a section of that and knock out-
Plus, you have, you have ditches there to contend with, right or wrong? On Emmanuel Church?
Emmanuel Church have ditches, so you would probably be building that sidewalk pretty close to the road. The North Harrington sidewalk was already designed for the previous plots to see if we could fit it in the right-of-way, because the right-of-way moves, the road moves within the right-of-way, back and forth.
I just, I, I see either one of those projects as infrastructure.
Any other discussion? The last item on the list has been added as a SPOLOST project manager or managers, Any discussion there? I would, I would like to add that for the people that are listening, we will, this list is now on the website. That is correct, Ms. Patel. It, it was posted late this afternoon, right?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I wanted to ask about the last item, the project manager.
Yes, sir.
How do we see that? We heard just contracting to somebody specifically for the SPOLOST period or firm and for hiring somebody on staff?
As, as I understand it, if, if you hire a firm, they, they will charge you a percentage of a total project, and it could cost a lot of money. The idea is to hire someone in-house and designate them to, the projects are a portion of the projects, and then they would report to the oversight committee and the commission on, on how those projects are going as, as it moves forward.
So it may be more than one person?
It may have to be more than one person.
They may have multiple projects that-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and the number could be less than 350,000. It could be-
It could. You'd probably want to get an RFP out there to get proposals for firms that do that. And by itself, a, a project manager is not an eligible project, but you can use funds within the project budgets for that. So you'd want to build in that 350 or 300, whatever that is, into each one of the projects, because you can, you can offset expenses like that through the projects themselves.
We, we need to take this off as a line item.
I think, I think what we're looking at is to hire somebody in-house. We, we don't really want an outside firm, because that doesn't seem to work very well.
Correct. So you could, you could have an employee or employees that do it.
So we could take, we can take that off and that can just be in the, in the general fund?
It, it could. Or you could, you could use, you could hire an employee or have an employee, as long as you keep detailed records of what the employee's doing and what they're spending their time on, you can, you can pay for that person's salary or their pay through SPOLOST. Again, it's a portion of each project.
A percentage of-
Correct. That's correct. It's like any other expense.
So there's an administrative, and we look at allocated, what is it, Allen, that we use for administrative costs? Administrative allocated rate or something, or we have something that's approved that we apply to these grants or some of the funding?
Mr. Chairman?
They'd be referring to indirect costs?
Right. It's called different things with different entities.
Right. In, in this particular situation, what the county attorney suggested would, would certainly be appropriate. I think that 350,000 would not be enough. I think it's going to take, you know, right now, we have several employees in different departments helping to manage the projects. So if the commission is interested in hiring standalone staff to work on the SPOLOST, it is eligible cost per project, but there may be, need to be more conversation about the, the actual number of employees that may be needed to manage the SPOLOST projects.
Because I don't, I don't think we've ever had a discussion about the management of the projects. We just assumed the staff would handle it. And so I don't recall if we've had any feedback from the staff, other than them reporting that, you know, it's been done or it's in the process of being done. So the, the, the impact on, on this, on the staff, I don't know if we've considered. So, I mean, I like this idea, but how do we move forward in the best way so that we have oversight and can move these projects forward? I think we need to, we need to make a decision around that.
Mr. Chairman, let me add on, on to the, that discussion about that. We've all talked about that issue, and that's projects not being able to be done in a timely manner or delays. That was, I know that the SPOLOST 2016 report to us that we read, that was one of their strongest recommendations. And I'll just give you an example. If you remember, we talked at the last meeting about SPOLOST 2016 projects, a number of them that were not completed yet and what was holding them up. I made notes as we went down the list the other night. Wetland permits, right-of-way acquisitions, another project being held up, right-of-way acquisitions, DOT permits, DOT permits. Let's see here, review delay, DOT permits, parcels to acquire. All of those hold up projects, not just, but that's, that's what's holding up 2016 projects from being finished. And you got to have some people beyond staff that can bulldog those permits. I know we've talked, one of the things, just as a reminder to the community- I know we've talked, one of the things, just as a reminder to the community, and our builder, Mr. Chairman knows this, it used to be you could walk into Glen County and get a land disturbing permit here. And now that permit has to be acquired from Athens because that's where the application goes, and the delay on that's automatically two, three weeks or even more. You got to have people that are part of these projects. If we're going to do them and do them right, is to bulldog all of these peripheral things that go on. Staff has a hard time with their daily load that goes on, so that's why this is up and being forward.
I totally agree that-
What do we suggest?
That having someone to oversee this on a day-to-day basis and using Commissioner Fendig's term bulldog to provide that day-to-day accountability is imperative to not only seeing these projects completed in a timely manner, but also that we're able to communicate clearly with the public as to where these projects are. And I appreciate the work that the staff is doing, but, I mean, we're asking them to manage these projects and manage day-to-day operations. It's a lot, and it's easy for things to get kind of pushed to the side. If you run into a permitting issue or you're having to wait on the, you know, DNR or something to that effect, I think if you have someone working on this day-to-day, you'll see a lot of improvement in progress as well as communication to the community.
And I think we agree that we've got to have some sort of project management. We will discuss this and whether they have to be included in the individual projects, which it appears, you know, that's where this is headed. We will work that through. I want to make sure that the public knows that is listening, that the published project list, they can make comments on any item. Please send us those comments. We are still reviewing. And this has been the purpose of going through this many times, and the list is changing, and you can tell that some of the commissioners are voicing things tonight that they have heard from that feedback. And I think that's the process, it's the way we want it, so that we are listening to the community and tweaking these things as we go. So we're not going to all agree on every item, and I understand that, but that's the reason we're going through this process. We're trying to change the way that it's been done in the past to make sure that we have community involvement, to involve as many in the community as we can. And that's the purpose. It may not be a perfect process this time, but it's the first time we've tried it this way, so we hope to fine-tune and move forward. With that, we'll close the discussion on that, and then I'll ask Mr. Attorney, do we have any items for executives?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one quick moment. Let me just clean up the mess I made on the parking fee thing there. Counsel is absolutely correct. I was under the impression somehow that Tybee Island had worked out a deal for their residents up there that they did not have to pay a parking fee. They tried it, they went to court, they lost. So anyway, I think you're correct. I think the numbers are solid, the $650,000 are solid, but there would be a pass for people parking in the public lots, so just to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brooks. And Mr. Mumford?
Commissioners, no executive session this evening, but I do have a question back for the board. I know we're scheduled to meet again on Tuesday morning in hopes to finalize the, not only the list, but the resolution that the county must pass to get it on the ballot. What that includes is not only the list, it's the resolution calling for the election with all the good stuff that we send to the Board of Elections. Also included in that is the ballot question, which I'll have to build with the final list. So I guess my question is to the board, when do we think we'll have a final, final list that I can finalize the resolution? I would request that if I have an afternoon or evening to kind of fine-tune things before presenting you with the final resolution. So if it's Tuesday morning, I would ask that we have the final list on Monday, or if we are going to finalize it on Tuesday, that we take the final vote on the Wednesday. That gives me enough time to build in the language that we need for the ballot and then the resolution.
That's an interesting question. One that I hadn't been asked before right now. So it was our intention to continue to work on this list until the Tuesday morning vote, vote on it as a final list when we prepared it. We don't have to present it to the state, but you're saying the resolution that we would vote on, you cannot prepare the language to that resolution until you know these numbers?
Correct. I've prepared it. I've gone as far as I can go without having those final numbers, the final project descriptions, and with that final project list to make sure it adds up to our allotted amount. And from there, I will build the ballot question, which is the question that will be presented to the voters, and that will include references to projects that are going to be approved through the SPOSS. And that's not something I can do, I would recommend or can do on the spot as you're making that final list. Again, ask for at least a few hours, if not a half day or so, to finalize that ballot question.
Would the procedure be correct and legal then if we had a special call meeting on Tuesday morning to vote the SPOSS list, and then would we have to recall a meeting to adopt the resolution?
You would.
Commissioners?
And we have until Friday as our drop date to have that-
Next Friday, not tomorrow.
Correct.
As-
There a time for the morning meeting Tuesday?
We were, it has to be Tuesday morning because there is another meeting, meeting virtually Tuesday afternoon, as I understand it, two of them. At 2:00 PM?
Yeah.
So.
So we said, I'm just asking for the time.
We had considered a 9 o'clock Tuesday meeting, and the purpose was to call this question and the two questions, the one to adopt the resolution, two to adopt the infeasibility resolution of the convictions. So it is my opinion, and just my opinion, that we would need then to change our agenda for Tuesday to vote for the approval and the infeasibility, and then have to give Mr. Mumford time to compose that list and then have a virtual meeting Thursday to vote to adopt. So with that, I suppose that will be our proposed agenda. Is there anything else that needs to come before us tonight? With that, we stand adjourned.